I didn't test it yet.
Call this Grand Forks City Council meeting to order and the first item of business is the adoption of the September 16th regular meeting in Janbeck. I have that motion. Councilor Corleto, second, Councilor Studley, all those in favor. And we have a bunch of minutes, but if we could group a couple here together. We've got a going camera.
Why don't we just start from off?
Thank you, Counselor. Making the motion to adopt A, B, and C minutes. Secondor for that, Counselor Krog. All those in favor? Carry. Nicely done. And we're down to council reports. We had no written reports, but I'm going to go around the table and ask for any verbal reports, starting with Counselor Moslin. Do you have anything to say, sir?
Just one thing, just to, you know, the council has had, been doing some serious planning over the last little while, and we did have an in-depth planning workshop for a day and a half this past week with planning staff, which I found very informative and a good chance to help establish priorities in our, for our community. I'm sure lots more is going to come out about that in the weeks ahead. And the other thing I'd like to say is I'd just like to say a big thank you and shout out to the Fall Fair folks for the organizers and volunteers. I did it all up really well. Again, thank you very much.
And Counselor Corleto?
I'd just like to say the same thing that workshops we had last week were really informative and a great way to build confidence in our plan going forward, and I agree that Fall Fair was great, so, thank you.
Moving around, Counselor Zalinski.
Yes, I want to echo the sentiments. The planning workshop was an excellent one also. I do have a question for staff. Just a little bit of an update on the airport master plan.
Comment on the airport master plan?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The airport master plan is part of the area sector plans that we're hoping to do. So as far as I know, they're, they're planned to start at the same time as the West End Sector Plan for the industrial zone, the sector plan. So it'll evolve the airport master plan along with the development area for the properties that are out by the airport all at the same time. So it did, there's no, nothing is started on the airport master plan itself, but it's part of a larger project.
Do we have a completion date?
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson?
The, the planning session that we attended last week, the day and a half, was absolutely excellent. It, it helped me to have a better understanding of the issues that our planning department has to face and how they are able to go through their whole processes to, to prepare, and it was just excellent. I want to give my kudos to the department and Doris Stuves in particular who organized this and set it up, and, yeah, job very well done.
Thank you. Counselor Studley?
Yes, the planning workshop was phenomenal. Kudos to both the Rock Creek and Grand Forks Fall Fair, both great events. There's, just want to remind people to keep your eyes on events pages because there's always great events coming up, so just please keep your eyes on that. There's no excuse why I didn't hear about it. All the info there is access information. Look at your newspaper, look online, look at the poster boards, and just seek out all those great events that are happening.
Okay, and Mayor's comment, I'm really impressed it over the last couple of rainy days, how beautiful the city looks. The planters and everything look great, even though they have to fight the deer and some of them, they, they do a really wonderful job, and so hats off to the, the whole crew that work the grounds and especially the planters this time of year. They've managed to make them look great from spring to fall, so, good work, guys. Thank you very much. A motion to accept the verbal reports. Counselor Corleto, Counselor, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? And I'm not going to comment on the RDKV this evening. I missed the last meeting. It was conflicting with the meeting at the church that we had with the flood recovery, and I wanted to give my support to Graham in that meeting, so I don't really have much to report. I will be having meetings over the next little while, so getting back to you in particular, the forestry issues that we're discussing at Boundary Economic Development. Counselor Corleto came to that, and I'm really pleased that she's shown a lot of interest in continuing with being a connection to our initiatives in the forest and the watershed. Thank you, Counselor Corleto. And that's my report. All those in, all those have a motion, whatever. Counselor Corleto, Counselor Zalinski, all those in favor? The procurement policy 802, we're looking at that again. We had a chance to look at it a few weeks back. There have been some minor adjustments made to it, and the motion I'm looking for is that council approves and adopts the procurement policy 802 revised version to Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Zalinski. Questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor? opposed, carried? The next item is Boundary Family Services, the letter of intent asking us at this point if we would look at the four lots, 78th Avenue is an opportunity to have an improved access to parking. Counselor Thompson?
Oh, did you? No, yeah, that was my, my big motion. I'd like to put a motion on the floor.
Okay.
That we refer this back to staff to talk to family services and UBC housing on their plans for those lots we brought.
Right. A secondor for that, motion, Counselor Corleto? All right, so sending it back for some discussion between those three parties that are involved in it. Counselor Krog?
Yeah, just, I note that ever since this whole project came forward, the minute it did, this table, and a lot of other people were pointing out the fact that one single entrance isn't enough, that it's not going to work, it's dangerous, it's stupid. They could have purchased the lots right behind to allow for another access. They chose not to, and we reminded them over and over that that's not a good thing, having a single access. So we purchased the lots, and now the operator of the facility is saying, "Look, this single entrance thing is stupid." So, yeah, I will support sending them back to staff, so that, yeah, if they want that access, they may have gotten it for free a long time ago, but they're definitely paying for it now.
They're complaining, "We told you so."
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
Yes.
Ready for the motion on this?
This is a negotiating item.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ready for, the motion is that we send it back to staff and investigate this. All those in favor? Carry. Flippin' Fund Gymnastics, requesting a letter of support, they're going ahead with, you know, moving forward with their putting together of supporters for their project, although we have not found them a piece of land yet, but that, that's correct, right? We're still looking at different options for the Flippin' people? Yes. But they're looking for our support to proceed with the request for funding.
I would put forward a motion that we, we send a letter of support as requested by Flippin' Fund Gymnastics.
All right, and secondor for that, Counselor Studley? Question, discussion, all those in favor? Grammy Wilderness Society, a flow-through grant to the Wilderness Society to partner with the high school for the riparian restoration. Again, this is requesting us to support this. Council supports the application for a grant of $15,000 by acting as the sponsor organization. There lies our responsibility to take a certain amount of responsibility for that grant, but we're not going to be administering it, but if we're going to sponsor it, we have to keep an eye on how it's used. Everybody understands that sort of.
I would make that motion.
And the secondor for that, Counselor Corleto, I saw your hand move, twitched.
You're not at an auction.
Actually, we, we've done that for several organizations, charitable organizations.
Yes, we have, and it's a valuable service.
It's no impact to the taxpayer.
Chair of the status.
I can add something.
And it's right here.
Mr. Mayor, this is a, a neat opportunity that actually came from a high school student, and there's a, a funding opportunity through Royal Bank of Canada for new leadership projects, and they saw, seeing the impact from the floods on all the riparian areas throughout the area, approached Jenny Cole's health, some others in the community, to see how they could maybe get involved, and so this came together very, very quickly, and it also looks like we'll have support from the, the watershed service through the RDKV. They're going to be getting involved and helping coordinate the work, so.
Christina?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Sounds exciting. Question? All those in favor? opposed, carried? And to the favorite topic of council remuneration advisory group, my understanding from Juliet is that our publications have raised no volunteers, although I, I had a rumor that there was one maybe that had come forward, and is that the case? Do you have actually a volunteer?
We have one application.
One application, okay. Council, how would you like to deal with this? We, we keep kicking it around, and I think we're making additional work for our CFO, but Counselor Moslin?
Yes, your worship. I know that at the 2018 UBCM, there is a motion to, for that organization to conduct a review of council remuneration. That new policy document is going to be on the floor of this UBCM, and there will be discussion sessions about it. That policy paper on council remuneration is available at the UBCM website. You have to dig around, you'll find it. And they compared larger urban, middle-sized, and small, our rural constituencies, and basically asked them how you would do it, and they got back a bunch of different suggestions. So what I was going to recommend, your worship, is that we defer this till at least after UBCM, but we've had a chance to discuss, to at least discuss that due policy document with other constituencies, and, you know, maybe come up with a, a, a better plan or another plan with a suggested timing as well.
So a deferment to post-UBCM?
Yes.
Your worship. And secondor for that?
Ah, okay.
Okay, second and commenting?
Yeah, and I, and I think the, someone could probably have reached a resolution. I think it was just a matter of comments come back to council by February of next year. And, and we're just, they're trying to get the group together, so. So I think we're, we postpone the presentation back to council anyway till February of next year, if I even got there.
Can we kick it down this road any further?
Yeah, if you want, it's going to be interesting, like you said, what happens.
Yeah, when you take a look at the policy document, they talk about when you should do the review in your, within your term, but there are some choices, pros and cons, so it'd be worth taking a careful read of that document.
So this is a motion to defer. Do you have any desire to do anything else here in terms of this topic? We're all overpaid. Motion is on the floor. This is a deferment. All those in favor? And we're moving down to bylaws, the first one being the rezoning Highway 3. We've had the commercial tourism, we've had this one in front of us for a while.
Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
The agenda was amended. We reversed the order after we looked at it the first time.
Sorry.
Oh, no, sorry. I'm wrong. My, my bad. I have the wrong paper in front of me.
Wrong meeting?
No, no, it was just, yeah, no. It's fine.
Is this thing recorded?
So you know which property this is? We've all looked at it. Can we have that motion?
So.
The council gives first reading to amendment by law 2039. Counselor makes the motion.
I did.
Second is Counselor Krog. And discussion? Question? All those in favor? Carry. Annual permissive tax exemption. This is a final reading. We've had this in front of us for two, two or three weeks, and I have this motion for final reading of 2020 permissive tax. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Corleto? Any discussion? Painfully no. Question? All those in favor? Carry. Revenue anticipation borrowing bylaw. Counselor Thompson could refresh us on what this is for, but this is a annual event where we anticipate what we might need and increase our borrowing. Is that the way you read it, Counselor?
Yeah, this is, just allows us to, to, to operate for the first six months of the year if we have to go into overdraft.
Yes. Would you make the motion?
I would make that motion.
Second and by, Counselor Corleto? Question? All those in favor? Carried. And the utility billing, there's some uniqueness to this, and council gives first reading, first three readings to this bylaw is what we're being asked to put on the table. Can I have the motion to get it on the table? Counselor Corleto, seconded by Counselor Thompson.
This is, Mr. You.
Counselor Thompson?
I'm your CEO. This is, this is just in keeping with the, the other bylaws, with the rates, if I understand it correctly.
Juliet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the idea with this bylaw is that we have different provisions related, related to billing and equal payment plan, et cetera, in each of the three separate regulatory bylaws, and the manager of operations is working on revamping the regulatory bylaws, so we thought it would be better to just pull out the financial pieces all into one common bylaw. So, so that's what we've done here, so we have the same set of rules for each, for each of the utilities. And then I'm, I'm just asking you for first three readings here, and then when the, it, this will have to go to final reading at the same time as the, as the regulatory bylaws, because they'll be pulling out the financial pieces out of there. So for now, it's first three readings and then wait until the regulatory bylaws are ready to go ahead.
Okay, Counselor Thompson?
I'll make that motion.
And the secondor would be Counselor Studley, come on. And further discussion on this? So it looks like it's a tightening up of the risk factor for the, this is, for the city in terms of some situations where, again, you know, the owner of the property is responsible, we're watching the payments. Counselor Moslin?
Yes, your worship. That's, that's the area that caught my attention, that is, section seven, security deposits and prepayments. That's actually page 154 of your agenda. Anyhow, well, sorry, I'm assuming it is. It says, A, the customer does not have an established or satisfactory credit history with the city. Now, I, I can understand if somebody, you know, been a, a citizen of the city and then has not paid their utility bills, but I'm wondering about new citizens. Do they come with an established credit history? Is the city going to be looking for their credit scores, or is it just?
So would we penalize new residents that didn't have a history with us?
That's my question.
Right.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, the main, the main purpose for putting this in there is in case we have, say, a large industrial customer or somebody who might be high-risk. In the case of a, a normal resident, their, their unpaid utility bills will roll to taxes at the end of the year, so we can collect them through taxes, but this is to, this is a may, we may request it, it's not a we will.
I see.
And we, yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing credit checks on our normal citizens.
So paying taxes, then not worried.
Yeah, it's just to reduce the risk in case we have somebody who's, that we can't roll the taxes to the property, say, in the case of a property that's leased, owned by the city and leased to somebody, we can't, it doesn't do us any good to roll the taxes onto our own property.
Okay, council? Comfortable with that? Ready for the question here? It's on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed? The next item is the financial plan amendment. I know we've had a lot of unexpected things happening. I wonder if we could get someone to lead us through this particular, this is giving first three readings to a financial plan amendment.
Juliet, do you want to give us some of the flavor here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so, yeah, so we have quite a few resolutions go through mainly for capital projects, and so it's a good idea now to, to move ahead and amend the financial plan, which we can do at any time, so. I have actually put in quite a bit of detail as to what the changes are. There's some changes that I made that, you know, reflect better knowledge of our situation, like our anticipated shortfall with the campground, additional revenue with building permits, and then there's some adjustments that I've made for, that reflect actual, actual numbers rather than the estimates that I had when we did the approved financial plan. So this, I mean, there's quite, there's quite a bit of detail here on all the differences, so I guess at this point, if there's any specific questions.
This is first three readings. Can I have the motion? Counselor Krog? Second and by Counselor Thompson. Discussion? Counselor Zalinski?
I'm just wondering, at what point in time are we going through the list of capital expenditures and sort of updating those? And, and the reason I ask that is I see a 2018 carryforward Silver Hill Sidewalk that I believe is completed, so I'm just wondering.
If I remember this right, there's still some money outstanding on it for doing low-impact development, or at least they were trying to pool some project money together, potentially closing that project off and opening up a new one to get the, like it's bioswales and drainage systems and things like that implemented. But yes, there, there's been projects on for a long time, and this one actually has been on there for, probably since 2016.
But there is some cleanup on this listed house that happened?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any idea when we're, that update's going to happen? Next revision?
I would guess when we move to the 2020 budget year, we need to take these off, whichever ones are complete by then.
We need to review the whole one, through the whole budget. Every budget, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, ready for, I'm sorry, may I, another comment?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There will be an update provided of the third quarter results of, yeah, the capital projects and the expenditures year-to-date will be provided during, during that time.
Right, motions on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Bringing us to the public and the media, questions from the floor. Anyone out there interested in speaking?
Hi, Angela, I guess. I was wondering, you guys discussed about your workshop, your planning workshop, and just wondering, does that mean that you have zoning in place, or that's just part of the plan you?
This was how to more than get it done, although we were certainly encouraged by the kind of input from the presenter that we had. If you're asking, did we decide on zones for, for instance, a shelter? No. That council has not really addressed that at this point at all.
Do you know, can I continue?
Sure.
Can I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Like follow up. Do you know when you guys would start doing your, your plan for the zoning? Because I thought that was going to be on the, on the third.
Yeah, it's Graham. Please help me out here with timing.
Through the mayor, the, one of the outcomes from the workshop this week was an action plan for the various different planning priorities that were identified by council. There was strategic, strategic planning that happened this summer, and there were several planning items in there, including updating the zoning bylaw for this, you know, for the language and the descriptions that were, you know, discussed here. There's some additional steps that need to be taken, and so staff is preparing an action plan that'll be brought forward, I think probably for, when they look at the timeline. At least we'll be bringing the action plan forward in October for when everything will be happening. Some of those that were immediate priorities will be introduced within the next month or so.
Angela, does that cover it?
I guess. I was just kind of hoping we would have, have it in place so we can move along.
I understand, thank you.
Lots of things.
Further from the floor, or, sir?
Good evening, your worship, and good evening, councilors. My name is Nigel James, and I live in Grand Forks. My first question is to confirm that I've got my facts basically correct, and that is the council's job to decide policy and objectives and that sort of thing, and then it's the staff's responsibility to put them into, into being and so on and do the work.
In general, yeah.
In general. As for the five-year plan, may I ask who wrote the objectives and the policies? Knowing that, I would have thought that members of the council would have put the policies onto paper, because it's be their ideas, et cetera. Who, who actually wrote the, the items there, please?
I'm sorry, I missed, which item is specifically?
Well, on, on page 178.
And the item is?
Funding sources. The objective, and it goes to say, those are the two objectives, and then there were, it looks like, two, 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 about six or so policies underneath it. And, I mean, because it's policy, obviously that falls in, falls into the responsibility of the council.
Yes. And, how would you interpret this?
Well, I'm not worried so much about interpreting the present, I'm wondering who wrote them?
Who wrote it?
Yes, I mean, they're council, they're, the responsibility of the council, therefore I assume that the council met and decided what the policies were going to be.
Juliet?
Mr. Mayor, yes, these policies come from, from our asset management, Financial Policy 808, which was passed before I started here, but that would be the council policy.
Yeah, it was approved by council, 808. Yeah, so that was council that wrote those.
The council actually wrote them.
Well, no, staff would have written them, council would have adopted them.
Yeah, Counselor Thompson.
Somebody was, perhaps Counselor Thompson, wordsmith and perhaps, I don't know, but.
She just reminded us.
No, our, our staff create the policies, and they bring them to council for council's consideration and recommended changes if needed, and once everyone is satisfied, then council adopts the policy.
I see. You, you said that the, the staff write the, decide on the policies, is that correct?
That one, that's based on, on direction, and some of it's legislated that has to be required. But no, staff, or, excuse me, council does not write the, the policies out. That is, we want a policy with respect to this particular matter, and then we refer it to. it to the department head who is responsible for that particular area. In this case, it's our, our financial plan, which would be referred to the chief financial officer, who would then create a policy, bring it to council for consideration and discussion. And, because she's the one, is the professional, we're not. And council, we discuss it, we review it, and, and then ultimately council adopts it.
All right. Thank you very much indeed. One of the reasons why I raise this is because I've had a feeling of late, based following the floods and so on. Initially, everybody got together, and then things started drifting apart, and there seemed to be less cohesion within the city. And it struck me that people were tending to organize it by the, off the, off the, back of their pants as such. There wasn't really anything laid down. And recently, there was the idea that load, people who had guaranteed income supplements should perhaps have a reduction of the electricity charges. I'm glad to see that that, as reported in the, in the minutes, has been dropped, because as I said, and you agreed, I think, Your Worship, that basically that is the situation, that's the purview of the provincial government and the federal government. One of the questions I have is how on earth did that get into black and white as a potential bylaw? Because perhaps if I hadn't spotted it, nobody else seemed to have done it, or whatever, and it might have been passed by mistake.
Mr. James, that was out-of-the-box thinking from staff, and we had ample opportunity to react to it. I mean, I was intrigued by it initially, some of the arguments that came up in terms of your, your state, that this was not our responsibility, and that it was a slippery slope in terms of other things. I mean, it was very well presented as an idea, and well accepted and debated by council.
Okay.
So thank you, Mr. James.
No, but I, I come now actually to basically the, as is written down in the objectives. And the first objective is to increase to a level that approximates the annual increase in inflation, unless certain things, which, and inflation has been at about 2%, plus or minus a little bit over the last five or six years at least, and seems to be going the same way. So we can set it at about 2%, I think. Is that, is that a reasonable assumption?
In making your point here, sir?
Yes. Well, then it goes down in the next point, that increasing utility rates consist, consistent over time between 3% and 4% to fund the capital reserves. So now you're saying that everything's going to be at 2% as much as possible. In the very next line, you're saying, ah, but we're going to go to 3% to 4% for some utilities. You seem to be contradicting yourselves automatically, straight off.
All right. Counselor Thompson, take it.
Well, with respect, Mr. James, one, we're talking about property taxes, which are borne by all tax, property owners in the city. And the, the second point is dealing with utility rates, which is your water, your sewer, your electrical, your solid waste management, your garbage. So those are particular services that have to be funded.
Of course.
And for capital replacement. And we do have a capital asset management plan.
That's going to be maintained.
And, yes, and we have to put the money away for those rainy days when something happens.
Of course.
And so that is, would be, I would tell you, that is, that is how it is proposed, that those funds be, be raised.
Oh, here we go. You see, for operations, to maintain annual increases to a level that approximates the annual increase in inflation, unless a specific program or project is, is identified, the required tax level, revenue, funding. I'm sorry, I misread, I think I missed a line out or something.
Yeah, and you were having some trouble understanding the rationales then?
No, not at all. It's just that the, the tax level is set at now 2% increase. And the implication there is that 2% is a very good number to choose, because it's the rate of inflation or the C P I. And, and consequently, everything else should be based on that, because you're basing the, the tax income, your revenue, on the, on the C P I.
Okay, I may, and I'll ask your C A O to correct me if I'm wrong, but my read of that is, we want to hold it, if the C P I for Canada is 2%, we don't want to go any higher than 4% for property tax purposes. Now, is that my correct interpretation? I'm receiving an all. So it's, it's, it's within 2% above inflation.
Why?
Because we have to have money put away for roads, road upgrades, for parks, all of the asset management.
If you haven't got the money, don't spend it.
Okay. Nigel, I think you made your point. Thank you very much.
Well, I haven't finished it, I'm sorry.
I have other people waiting, I can see hands all over the...
All right. They won't turn her on. The other thing is, actually, in the revenue, other sources account for 50, what was it? 54% of the revenue.
That's this year.
Other sources, I mean, it's so descriptive, I can't believe it.
Or actually, utility rates.
The, the sort of thing with this C P I, one assumes that the, basically, we're all going to aim at, try to keep at 2% C P I rates and so on, or rate of inflation, whatever. And I presume that includes staff remuneration, council remuneration, the, I mean, what are the city, what is the city doing about reducing its expenses? There's no mention here about being more efficient, or trying to get, save, save cash, and try to do things differently.
Mr. James, and we're taking your comments seriously. We did have presentations last week about the affordability of living in Grand Forks, so I can assure you that council is hearing loud and clear, that there are people saying that we're pricing ourselves out of the comfortable market.
I'm not saying that at all, Your Worship. I'm, I'm just saying, I do, I think we, you need to do some really serious thinking about how you can run the city.
At less cost.
Maybe at less cost, maybe more cost, but run it more efficiently and, and better for everybody. That would be enough. Thank you.
Well, that means there's a lot of leeway here, if we can, we can run it more efficiently, and if it costs a bit more money, that's the cost. I like that. Further from the floor, from the media?
So Weeds filed their original petition mid-August, after which the city, I understand, had three weeks to respond. I wonder if that response has become public yet to the city?
Which petition?
Petition of court to...
Weeds and Suenos.
Yeah, yeah, Weeds.
Have we responded to their...
Okay. Our C A O?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Legal counsel's been in contact with the opposing party, and they've arranged to wait until the amended petition was filed.
Okay. So now there's three weeks from, I guess it was filed on the September 10th or 11th, so it's three weeks from that date now.
So this is an amended?
Yeah, this is amended piece now, so I'm, I'm waiting to hear from our legal counsel what's the next step.
Okay. And then, very different question. I moved here after this talk, but any, any news on Tim Hortons coming to Grand Forks?
Good question. Is there anything we can say from planning on that?
No, nothing.
Not really, not without violating some confidentiality on the matter. We're hoping, like, there's a lot of people rooting for him.
But there are donuts available in town. So tactically, we're okay.
Anything further? No. Okay, motion to adjourn. Counselor Crogg.